We're going to call the city council meeting for 9/26/2022 to order. Let the record reflect, starting time is 7:00 PM. And Clerk Swob, would you please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Daniels is absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right. Is there anyone, sorry, that folks would like to remember during a moment of meditation tonight? Seeing no hands, if you will please rise in a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we should stand, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the proceedings of August 22nd and September 12th.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the minutes as written for August 22nd and September 12th.
All right. There's a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to comments by councilmembers on the city clerk.
All right. Do we have any comments from councilmembers tonight? All right, seeing none. Clerk Swob.
The election is coming. Ballots will be in the mail on Thursday, so watch your mailbox. We do have the ballots in the office, both here at City Hall as well as 2500 South Washington. So if you have not already requested a ballot and want to come in person and get one, feel free to do that during our regular business hours, and we will have some extended hours starting next week at South Washington. We'll be open until 7:00 on Wednesday evenings, and then as we get closer to the election, we will have some weekend hours that I will announce later. And with that, we are to community event announcements. Anyone in the audience can give up to one minute of community event announcements, of the time and place and purpose of the event.
It's that time of year again. It's the annual 5K Run Walk inside Mount Hope Cemetery, the Race to Restore, which raises the funds we use the next season to fix monuments and markers in that cemetery. It's Saturday, October 15th, at 10:00 AM inside the cemetery, and you can register online at Playmakers, or runsignup.com, or on our Facebook at Lansing Cemeteries, or on our website at F O L H C dot wildapricot dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Jerry Norris with the Fledge. We will be kicking off our youth entrepreneurial program in conjunction with Lansing 501 at the blockade event on October 6th, so that's 5:00 PM, and we're still looking for young entrepreneurs to fill some slots. So if anybody wants to reach out to the Fledge, that would be great, or come to the event, and you can register there as well. And can I announce a candidates forum? Is that appropriate?
Yes.
E&amp;O will be having a candidates forum on Wednesday night at, I believe, at 6:00, and you can find out more information on the Eastside Neighborhood Organizations page. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we've got one more. Two more.
Hello. Erica Lynn from the Village Lansing. We will be having our fourth annual trunk or treat event at 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Suite G. This is our fourth annual, so we expect it to be pretty big. We are still asking for trunk hosts, so if you are interested in hosting a trunk, it's exactly what it sounds like. You dress up, decorate your trunk, and give out candy. We'll have a live DJ, snacks, various entertainments. We'll also be giving prize baskets out for best costume and best trunk. So we're looking for sponsors and donations in that sense, so if you're interested in sponsoring, or you know anybody that would like to sponsor, you can email us at thevillagelansing@gmail.com. And if you're interested in participating in the trunk or treat as a trunk host, you can visit www.thevillagelansing.org, or email us. Again, that is going to be on Halloween, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm speaking more to the public that's watching this right now, but there is going to be 2019 federal lawsuit was filed against the City of Lansing for racial discrimination, as well as hostile work environment. And that day that the truth is going to come out will be October 3rd, 2022, which is this Monday coming up. Starts at 1:30 PM, is scheduled to go about five days. It's at 174 Federal Building in Kalamazoo, Michigan. For all media and anybody else alike that would like to come and hear the truth, Mayor Andy Scher will actually have to be on the stand and testify for at least one of those days fully. So a lot of the conjecture and propaganda has gone on. We're going to know the truth here regardless of what the outcome be. You're going to hear the stories. So October 3rd, which is this Monday, I'll be there. Hope you all can be there too. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an election coming up, November 8th. Governors, Secretary of State statewide, and a few other people, his honor up there, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, and I yield back the ballots of my time.
Thank you. And seeing no one else, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight, as well as show cause hearing. Show cause hearing, if you're here regarding 3422 Lowcroft, be sure you sign up if you wish to speak with Jason in the back. That's item two. And then for everyone other than the persons who received a notice on that hearing, the items are three through 22 on the agenda, although it's my understanding that items five, six, seven, and 10 will not be considered tonight, but they're listed on the agenda so they are still eligible for public comment. So again, if you could sign up in the next minute with Jason in the back. And in the meantime, we are to the mayor's comments.
All right. Mrs. De Sessa, I believe, or if Mark wants to take it. Okay. Fantastic.
Your Honor, if I may, I'd just simply like to say that our deputy chief will give the report. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your indulgence. Couple of things. Secretary of State is holding a driver's license restoration clinic on October 12th from 11:00 to 7:00 at Union Missionary Baptist Church. That's 500 South MLK here in Lansing. You do need to pre-register, and you can do that at the Michigan Secretary of State website, which is michigan.gov/sos. And I found the best way to find the page is to just search for Road to Restoration, which is what they're calling the event. Our neighborhood grants will launch on October 1st. We're going to do something a little bit different this year and give organizations the opportunity to speak directly with the Neighborhood Advisory Board on the first. That will be at 11:00 at SWAC, and lunch will be provided. To RSVP, please call 311 or the Department of Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement. Along those same lines, save the date for the annual Love Lansing Celebration, which will be Tuesday, May 17th, 517. The City of Lansing Hispanic Heritage Month Education and Celebration Event has been rescheduled. It was supposed to be this Friday. It's now going to be October 7th from 10:00 to 5:00 at the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center. There's going to be food, educational, and historical exhibits, traditional dances, and more. And last but not least, ARPA grant applications are due this Friday, September 30th. Easiest way to apply is to go to our website, lansingmi.gov, click or tap the "I Want to" up at the top right-hand corner, and you'll find that application under the "Apply For" heading on our website. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We are now to the show cause hearing in consideration of orders to make safer demolish to the owners of 3422 Lowcroft Avenue.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This property was red-tagged on 523, 2019. The SEV value of the property is $29,500. The estimated repairs are $60,560.64. There is an expired sighting notice, there is an expired electrical notice, and the plumbing permits, as well as mechanical permits, have not been applied for at this time. There is no one present at the public safety meeting when this was discussed.
Thank you.
And there is no one present wishing to speak on this topic tonight, so on the referral of the show cause hearing.
Public safety.
And we are to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that includes items three through 22, and none of those are public hearings. So we can proceed right to the public comment. First, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Jody Washington.
Well, this is going to sound like a broken record, because it is a broken record, and I'll keep saying it until I can't say it any longer, because you've either listened or you've not listened. Pilots, we cannot afford them. You've got three of them on the agenda for approval, two for the stadiums, and one for the Hillsdale. And as Councilwoman Wood pointed out at the last meeting, the synopsis of the existing pilots shows that the city is losing $2.7 million a year in income that it could otherwise be obtaining, which equates to 18 police officers that we could have on staff and do not. And now, if you pass these pilots as they stand, two for 35 years and one for 45 years, you're doubling that amount, in essence. It might be a little over, a little less than double, but it's approximately doubled. So you're talking about depriving the citizens of 36 police officers, roughly a third of the force that we need and could have by virtue of approving these pilots, if that's what you choose to do. And there's an Oprah as well, and there again, you're looking at rewarding a landlord who has notoriously, over a number of years, failed to maintain his property, and now wants us to carry the burden of fixing it up and making it usable or saleable. I don't think we should be in the business of rewarding bad landlords. We cannot afford it. You're looking at Board of Water and Light projecting $18 a month or more in increases for the people using the Board of Water and Light. You're looking at $153 or more in increased property taxes for the bond that the mayor wants for the public safety building. You're still talking City Hall, you're still talking a performing arts center, and you're looking at burying us in costs that we cannot bear. For some of you, and for, you know, maybe many of you, it would mean cutting back on eating out. For others, it'll mean cutting back on eating. Some of you, it would mean cutting back on how many Starbucks you get in a week. For others, it'll mean cutting out milk. For some of you, it would mean, okay, I go to one less movie a month. For others, it's one less pack of diapers. You have to start thinking about the people at the bottom, because they're the basis and the foundation and the support of this city. You can't continue to undermine them and expect to stay afloat. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, followed by Norma Bauer.
Thank you. Hey, Peter. I'm here to talk about the pilots. I know I too sound like a broken record, but I have to tell you, this is the worst thing ever. Lansing's median income is $44,233. That is $25,000 to $50,000 for every surrounding area that we have. Every municipality and township that touches Lansing borders is $25,000 to $50,000 median income dollars ahead of us. We are a working-class, middle-class city. Very few people in this city are wealthy. We cannot afford this anymore. Our population is down to just over 112,000 people. Our businesses are fleeing to the outlying areas. The region is flourishing. Lansing is rotting. The region is gaining population. Lansing is losing population. These developers that want to come in and build these poverty warehouses and not pay their fair share need to go elsewhere, which will mean you all have to fight with the state for the exclusionary zoning they give to the burbs, which forces us to take it. We can no longer afford it. I'm watching people put groceries back on the shelf that they can't afford. These housing units, the North Stadium, are you kidding me? Low-income senior, low-income, as they put it, homeless people, right smack in the middle of three homeless shelters. No green space, and high-rise, low-income poverty on the west side of the street. This has got to stop. I would love to talk to the genius that thought that was a good idea. Would you put your mother there? I don't think so. And Advent House says that they'll provide wraparound services. Advent House doesn't provide any services. They farm them out to everybody else and refuse to take your phone call if you call them too often. Lansing Housing Commission, they hold all the housing vouchers. You can have all the units in the world, but there are no vouchers. They're telling people to be homeless, and then they'll put them on the list, and maybe in two to three years, they too can have a voucher. These pilots have to stop. We have to stop allowing this in our city. In 45 years, that building won't even be standing. So please, you control the purse strings. Please do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norma Bauer, followed by Michael Lynn.
Okay. Some of us still believe in democracy. You know, government of the people, by the people, for the people. And so I thank you all for running for city council on a nonpartisan ballot that shows your willing to be involved in government. And I also want to thank the Poor People's Council, because they are people who are willing to get involved in government. They're here tonight to listen, and to talk, and to share the perspective, as Jody and Loretta just did, about what it's like for 99% of us. They're a gift to you, because you shouldn't have to serve without knowledge of what the people think. So you're not operating in a vacuum. They're here to tell you the truth of the people of Lansing, who don't understand, by the way, legalese. I know Brian does, because he's got a degree in law. Most of us are just ordinary citizens who maybe figured it out, like Carol Wood. But there's a trend, my two children who passed the bar on the first try tell me that there's a trend in legal things to communicate in plain English. So I really recommend that to you somehow, and to the city attorney. It's a good thing for communicating things, not just saying things that we don't understand. And by the way, I had to pay for parking tonight to come to the committee of the whole. I guess you didn't. You know, you just park under the city hall, right? That's a privilege, and you deserve some privileges for serving. But do you really not want to have the people here? I hope not. And I have a couple of other questions. Like, usually, Robert's Rule says there should be an item on the agenda about correspondence. I didn't see that tonight. Don't answer me. I just wonder why. Somebody can tell me sometime. And I also wonder if we have an HR director yet, because several of the, or some of the last ones resigned or got fired or something. I don't know. It seems like that would be a really good thing for the people who are civil servants in the City of Lansing. So I guess I'm sort of saying amen to Jody and to Loretta. Thank you for listening and for the opportunity to share my perspective.
Thank you. Next is Michael Lynn, followed by Erica Lynn.
No question why we're here, the People's Council of Lansing, actually. There's a Poor People's Campaign, they're awesome too, but we're the People's Council of Lansing. But no question why we're here is for our agenda item of the Resolution for Transparency. It was supposed to come today, is what we were told, to be spoken on at Committee of the Whole, and it was bound up in the budget agenda, which we know is just a suggestion to the mayor, whether or not he does that or not. So the conversation keeps surrounding around whether or not this is just another thing that we were already going to do, like Brian said. You know, if it is or if it isn't, you know, bring it anyway. Right? If it is just something that we were already going to do, bring it anyways. I don't know why this is a discussion anymore about transparency and whether or not, just like Norma said, you know, she had to pay for parking outside. I've gotten several tickets out there trying to come here, but I also have a vehicle, so I can come here. I also don't work at night, so I can't come here. I also have a body that provides me breath that I don't have to have oxygen, so I can come here. I don't have bodily deformities, I can come here. There's a whole lot of people that can't, and I don't understand how it is I keep standing up here, speaking as an able-bodied citizen for people, and this council just seems to keep their ears closed. We've had so much discussion about this. We held a People's Council meeting. Brian Daniels came, Brian T. Jackson came and heard our recommendation for this resolution to come forward. Brian Daniels threw his hand up in the air and was very adamant that I bring it regardless. We asked if Brian Jackson be a co-sponsor of the resolution, almost as if it was a backing, like we know that Brian's going to bring it. I don't know what Brian Daniels is going to do. I know he's still trying to win an election. So how that goes or doesn't go, you know, how that went was, it got buried. It just got buried plainly. And here we are, a lot of people had to come here that can't necessarily be here, you know, or they can't necessarily stomach, you know, the ride down here and the parking and all the things I just explained, for something that could have been just easily stated to the People's Council that we weren't going to be bringing this the way that, you know, you all asked to bring it. And we tried like hell to work with you all, and we re are again, like all the bad conversations and all of that stuff. It just seems to be, there's a power that's going here, that there's some kind of superiority complex amongst you citizens, and you forget where you are, forget who you are and where you come from. Most of you have terms that are coming up, and you're just going to be regular citizens, as Jody is now here still trying to complain about the same things we all have been, as she sat right there before, listening. That'll be you all one day, and you'll need an advocate such as me in the People's Council to come here and do this for you at some point. Carol Wood, you know, coming down here to council is going to be tough, you know, for the elderly, that you represent a whole lot. You know, how is it that you all think they get down here and get their voices heard? You won't be on that seat anymore here in a couple of years to be able to stand in on that behalf. So accept our ability to speak for the people, and when we bring something to you, you know, stand confident in the fact that you're working together on it. It just didn't feel like that with this. Had much more to say about this agenda, but we'll, I'm going to respect your guys' clock there.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn.
She'll fill you in on what I was going to say. I today am also coming, representing the People's Council of Lansing. Agenda item 20, budget priorities. I first off want to say that I'm disappointed that this is where it ended up. The last time I talked about the Resolution for Transparency, I had said exactly that, that it got, you know, kicked to committee to, you know, die. And that is what it feels like. You know, for lack of a better word, it starts to feel like that's constantly what the repertoire is, where we come in strongly, we ask for exactly what we need, we are telling you exactly what it is that we as citizens and voters need and want, and then it gets filtered through, and it gets diluted down, and then it gets to be just a conversation and a suggestion. So I want to offer up that the resolution is not redundant. I really appreciated Councilmember Jackson's comments to kind of elaborate on that. It is not redundant, because I want to make it very clear what it is that the people are asking for. City council meetings are already streamed live. That's obvious. That's on, you know, City TV, it's on YouTube. So what you all are doing is saying we will add the capability, or we're going to ask for the budget priorities to include the ability to stream city council committee meetings. That's great. And it's also the bare minimum. That is literally the bare minimum, because this already exists in city council, the equipment exists, all of these things exist. It's not something that is actually giving what we are asking for and what we need, which is full transparency along with full accessibility. So when we talk about full accessibility, that means we do not want to simply just be talked at. If we are unable to physically, mentally, maybe it's transportation, maybe it is work, maybe it is childcare, whatever the case may be, to physically come here, it is very ableist to not think about all of the reasons and the barriers. It is also very inequitable to not think about all the reasons and the barriers why people cannot physically make it to committee meetings and to council meetings. I come before you to say I want to personalize things for you, because as a person that lives with an invisible illness, it is very difficult, very often, to come here physically, because there are so many things that I try so hard to be involved in as a citizen. I work, I volunteer, I advocate, I try to be involved in the community, I want to be involved in my government, in politics, I want to be involved in the things that affect me. There comes a point where, at what point do we say to the people, we value full transparency, and we value you so much to participate in all of the things that affect you, that we are going to do everything that we can to make sure that there are no barriers for you to be here, whether that is at home, because I'm having breathing issues that day, whether it's because I cannot get off work, but I can take a break in the break room to at least give public comment. We are going to do that. I often have said the phrase, where there's a will, there's a way. I say that a lot to you all, because I've seen it, I live it with you all. Where there's a will, there's a way. So if you had the will for true transparency, true equity, true accessibility for us, the people, this is simple. This is so easy. Councilmember Jackson also brought up some of the apprehensions with, you know, possible trolls or people infiltrating, et cetera. I think that it's not only unfounded, that's an also very inequitable stance to take, because that means that you're valuing your personal opinion on that and your comfort over our needs and what we are asking for. Because even if that's what you think is going to happen, you don't know, and even if it did, so what? How exactly would that affect things if you had to listen to a few yahoos come in and say what they needed to say? They get three minutes. Maybe it'll prolong things, maybe it won't. Is that going to happen every two weeks? I highly doubt it. I highly doubt that. But on a day that I invite you all, this is on a personal level, look up the spoon theory. The spoon theory is a great analogy for people that live with disabilities and people that live with chronic illnesses, specifically invisible illnesses. And a whole lot of people don't have enough spoons left to come physically to attend a meeting, and we still do, because it's that important to us. So like Mike said, he doesn't have that issue. He can come. Today, I could come, barely. In two weeks, I might not be able to come. That is inequitable, to shut me out of government processes simply because I cannot physically make it here. So I'm, again, the resolution is not redundant. I hope that there will be more conversations, because it does need to be brought, because that is not what we are asking for. We are not asking for you to simply stream committee meetings. I do not want you to read my comments. I want to give you my comments with my voice, so that you can hear the emotion, so that you can understand where it is that I'm coming from, the passion. So when we ask for full accessibility, that is what we are asking for, and that is not what is in the current budget priorities. It is simply, again, to talk at us. That's not full government transparency.
Thank you. And we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezon, a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the Code of Ordinances, Z22022. Two vacant parcels between 3220 and 3330 West Miller Road, from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to R6B Urban Residential, is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilman Garza.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So like our clerk said, this is rezoned, the two vacant parcels located between 3220 and 3330 West Miller Road. It's R3 Suburban Detached Residential to R6B Urban Residential. The applicant owner is Ray Garcia. The proposed duplexes will have no negative impact on traffic, the environment, or public services in the area. The duplexes that would be permitted under this proposed R6B zoning are consistent with the density being advanced in the master plan for the area in which the subject properties are located and the goals of the master plan to locate medium and higher-density residential land use along high-traffic-volume roads. So to ensure the density does not exceed the master plan designation, the applicant has agreed to a conditional rezoning where in the future, use of both parcels will be restricted to one single-family dwelling or one duplex. And with that, I would move the ordinance for passage.
All right, there's a motion on the floor as a further discussion.
All right, the only thing I'd add is that I'm not typically a huge fan of rezones, but what I appreciate in this situation is that, number one, this was brought forth by the applicant as a conditional rezon, and I certainly appreciate that. I think the second piece is that Mr. Garcia is known for doing good work in our community, and so I appreciate that as well, in terms of the applicant. This does comply with the master plan, it is not a spot zone, so I will be supporting, even though I typically am up here talking about why I'm not gonna support. With that being said, Clerks, would you please take the roll?
On the ordinance, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
All right, Councilman Garza, would you like immediate effect?
No.
You can't on this. Oh, I'm sorry, you can't on this. I apologize.
Now we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code of Ordinances, Z32022, 3021 Aurelius Road, from R2 Suburban Detached Residential to R6B Urban Residential, is read a second time by its title and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this too is, the applicant owner is Ray Garcia, VMG Construction. The proposed duplex will have no negative impacts on the traffic, the environment, or public services in the area. Duplex that would be permitted under this proposed R6B zoning is consistent with the density being advanced in the master plan for the area in which the subject property is located and with the goals of the master plan to locate medium and higher-density residential land use along the higher-traffic-volume roads. To ensure that the density does not exceed the master plan designation, the applicant has agreed to a conditional rezoning where in the future, use of this property will be restricted to one single-family dwelling or one duplex. And with that, I would move for passage.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion, seeing and hearing none. Clerks, vote.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza. Seven yays, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted, and that brings us to the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. On the consent agenda this evening, again, item 10 is being pulled and will be going back to City Operations. With that, we first have a tribute of recognition for National Hispanic American Heritage Month, and that will be presented on October 7th at the Alfreda Smith Center in recognition of the celebration. We also have a donation acceptance for Hispanic Heritage Month events, and this is in the amount of $9,100. This came from various agencies that donated to this. This is to cover the expense of the October 7th and the September 16th event. Then we are to the reappointment of John Shasky as the City of Lansing member of the Capitol Regional Airport Authority for a term to expire September 30th, 2026. We have a settlement of a workers' compensation claim. This is in a settlement of $50,000. This person is currently, was not offered another job with the city, is on duty disability, and will continue on duty disability until they move into active retirement. Next is a grant acceptance for the 2022 offenders' success contract bonus for the Office of Financial Empowerment. This is in the amount of $38,947.95. Some council members might remember a grant, a bonus that we received earlier this year. And the last is an outside counsel for Salvador Prescott Porter &amp; Porter, PLLC, to represent the city in the matter of Planned Parenthood versus with the Attorney General's Office. And with that, I would move the consent agenda.
All right, the consent agenda has been moved. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion.
Okay, we're to resolutions for action, and we have item 15, Oprah for Summit Street.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is Summit Street Development LLC having control of the property located at 700 May Street, Lansing, Michigan. The request for granting of an Oprah certificate by the City of Lansing on the property. The property has been inspected by the City of Lansing's assessors and determined to suffer from function obsolescence. So this is a 70,000-square-foot high bay crane space built in 1950 to be the Pruden Wheel Manufacturing Facility. Currently, there's no heating or cooling in the section. The wet fire suppression system needs to be replaced. The sprinkler heads are approximately 50 years old and must be replaced as well. The current light fixtures are an over-improvement where they are present, and there is no floor currently, and the storm water system needs to be rerouted. The applicant intends to rehabilitate the facility by creating 134 units, approximately at $1,100 per unit, of multifamily workforce housing along with amenities within the existing structure. And the renovation cost of this project is approximately $11,900,000. And with that, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, the, I do have a comment. I think the difference between an Oprah and some of the other economic development measures that we have is, an Oprah, we're still collecting taxes on the original property. Within 12 years, then we will be able to collect the balance of the taxes for the improvement. And this particular facility, we have seen the improvements that they have made to that surrounding area with the lofts that were put in it previously, so I will be supporting this.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, seeing no other further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have item 16, a claim appeal for trash fees at 4920 Christiansen Street.
President Hussein.
Sure, so this was, this was a property that was actually cited for trash. The original violation was on August 30th of 2021. We actually had a compliance date of September 6th of 2021. We had a co-compliance officer that went out on the site on September 7th. All violations were still present, and so this was passed on to a trash contractor. My understanding is that the contractor arrived on September 16th and found multiple violations to be present on the property, as noted in the pictures that are actually on the screen right now. At that time, they did actually request for additional yardage. We had actually a co-compliance officer go back out on site. There had been additional accumulation, so they were actually authorized, sorry, to remove additional yardage. That being said, this, because this is less than $2,500, this did go before our claims review committee. They did vet, and they did determine that our processes were followed, and the amount that was billed was due to actual work done. It came before operations last week. We actually had the claimant, who was the landlord, so this is Tom Buffett, actually had him into committee, and he provided testimony. He actually stated that he agreed that there were copious amounts of trash and that he wasn't necessarily arguing the amount of, as an example, cubic yard waste, but rather he was taking issue with the cost of our refuse contractor. So we explained that process. He actually did email us yesterday, I believe, and stated that he would not be here, that he did not, he had no intention of continuing to fight this, but that he didn't want us to see, or he didn't want to see us go through an RFP process and potentially, you know, I think his exact words were, "Add some integrity back to the process." So I did update him in terms of where we are at with actually an RFP process for a refuse contractor, and the fact that we did receive four responses to that RFP, and that we actually have a team vetting those as of now. So with that being said, I would move the claim appeal, claim number 1891. This is denial in full for $1,571 in trash fees.
Thank you, President Hussein. We have a denial on the claim. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously.
And we have item 17, grant acceptance for the Natural Resources Trust Fund.
Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The grant before us would accept, the resolution before us, rather, would accept $1.05 million from the Natural Resources Trust Fund, $635,000 for the Adado Riverfront Playground. Funds will be utilized to construct an ADA-accessible restroom, although we were told that would be a temporary structure because we can't put a permanent structure in the flood plain there. Eight-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, overlook deck, boardwalk, observation area, picnic tables, bike loops, and an art sculpture. This would come out of the Natural Resources Trust Fund. The second project is the Corporate Research Park Path Development. Construction engineering costs for a 10-foot pathway with two-foot shoulders between Forest Road and Collins Road. $300,000 grant with $671,000 local match. The local match is being provided by Ingham County Trails Milledge Funding. And then finally, the Fenner Pathway is a, the construction engineering cost for a 10-foot pathway with two-foot shoulders, again, traveling through Fenner Nature Center and Evergreen Cemetery, starting at the Mount Hope and Aurelius intersection and terminating at the Forest Road and Staten Roads intersections. It is a $988,600 grant with $688,600 coming from the local match, which is a county millage again. And then the final project is the Francis Park Rose Garden. This is to construct an ADA-accessible sidewalk ramp to the Rose Garden, other upgrades. There's no local match, and this is a $200,000 grant. So I would move the resolution, accepting these dollars, but this one does not appropriate them. We have to do that in a third resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item 18, grant acceptance for the County Parks and Trails Milledge.
Councilman Spatafor.
Mr. President, thank you. The next resolution would appropriate, accept and appropriate $1.310 million from the Ingham County Parks and Trails Milledge. $995,000 will be used for river trail pathway development along the Red Cedar and through Rainey Park, also known as the Montgomery Drain. $995,000 for that project. The second project is river trail bank stabilization near Mount Hope Cemetery. Exactly what it sounds like for $220,000. And the third item is river trail and overband and crack sealing for various locations of the river trail for $75,000. And then the final project in this grant, the application to the county, was $20,000 to help pay for the Trail Ambassador Coordinator for the Lansing River Trail. The Friends of Lansing River Trail will match that with $5,000, so it's a $25,000 program for the Trail Ambassador. So I move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item 20, Budget Priorities.
19.
19. Fee changes for the parks to park.
Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, again, a resolution adopting some fee changes for some of the parks programs. This is not all of them. We did approve some fee changes in the budget process. These are different ones. That question came up, why these came up now? There were various reasons for different items on this list, but we did advise that that be included as part of the regular budget process going forward. Nothing really sticks out, as we've used the services and realized what they cost, the fees have been adjusted accordingly. I'll move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, item 20, Budget Priorities.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Before us this evening, we have our budget priorities. The budget priorities are a requirement that is part of our charter, that our budget policies and priorities serve as a guide for the administration as they're facilitating and looking at the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. Again, the information that has been brought forward, some people like to refer it as a wish list, some as direction that the mayor can look at. There were, and I don't know, Mr. President, whether you want me to go through all of them or just do a synopsis.
A synopsis, I think, yeah.
Okay. We have items that came out of Committee of Hole. Some of these are carryovers from our last budget policies. There is also in here a sustainable manager assistant. That was something that was discussed by the sustainable manager of needing assistance. We also have increasing transparency, transparency that was brought forth by Councilmember Daniels, something that the council leadership has been working with City TV to try to accomplish with our committee process and to continue to look at that. There were increases to look at how better to help EDC as they look at providing services to our businesses. Then each of the committees, from Committee on Development and Planning, had different items on here that they were looking at to make sure that some of the things that we believe that were important, such as the facade improvements, doing a RFP for engagement stakeholders and competition to facility plans. The Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee looked at ways to support public safety, planning, commitment with partnership with Advance Peace. The Committee on City Operations talked about ways to make sure things were more accessible with having written materials to residents. Public Safety talked again about traffic calming measures, also making sure that co-compliance personnel were working with the administration to relating code violation tracking and follow-up. Ways and Means talked about initiating solar energy for city facilities. The Ad hoc Committee on Housing and Residential Safety, actually, their committee report is attached to that, and I'm sure Councilmember Spitzley will speak to the committee report when we have that up on the agenda. So with that, I would move the adoption of the council's priorities for FY 2324.
All right, thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and we have item 21, Council Rules, addition of Rule 47.
President Hussein, and just for people wondering what's the juggling of the gavel tonight, this would have been reported out by Councilmember Daniels because Councilmember Spitzley was not at the meeting. And so, next is Councilmember, President Hussein, so he is reporting out.
Sure, and it says in the notes that per Council Rule Number 41, what we're doing today is we are essentially receiving and reviewing. We can't actually vote on. We can't actually vote on this until the next council meeting, which will be October 10th. But in any event, this resolution pertains to an addition to Council Rules, and this would actually add a Rule Number 47. Very quickly deals with verification of qualifications, sorry, for elective office on an annual basis, not late, not later than May 1st. And what that would look like as we operationalize that is members of the City Council would actually provide to this city clerk an affidavit that the provisions of Lansing City Charter 2-102 continue to be met. So, folks know that at the outset of somebody running for council, per the charter, we cannot have any disqualifying, as an example, violation of election law, any disqualifying felony in general, and we can also not be in default to the city. Frankly, there have been allegations historically that there are council members that after they are sworn in, as an example, they might fall into default to the city. And so, I think what this does is provide some measure of assurance to the public that on an annual basis, we're actually reviewing that and we're ensuring that each person on council, still per the charter, meets the requirements to serve in this capacity. I think frankly, this should have always been part of our council rules. It was, it was an oversight candidly, and we're trying to rectify that. So, with that being said, I would, and again, there is no motion tonight, but I'm going to turn it back over to Vice President Wood. Oh, do we?
Yeah. It just hits for a week.
Okay. So, I thought we had that conversation last time, and I thought we did not. Okay. So, then I will officially move the, the change to Council Rules.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So, with the affidavit, which I'm totally in favor of, if you find out you violated the affidavit, what is the penalty?
And I'm actually going to defer to our city attorney. So, the question is if it is found that a city council member has filed an affidavit swearing that they still meet the requirements per the charter and has found that they do in fact not, what is the penalty?
Well, first of all, there's a charter provision that's very clear in the eligibility for office, and it says basically that no person holding any city office shall be in default to the city. Default can mean failure to pay income tax or not meeting one of the qualifications to hold an office. The remedy, the remedy is forfeiture proceedings against the person that holds that office, which would require, there's a whole procedure for forfeiture of office in the charter. And so, this just puts it in your rules, all right, about the affidavit, so it's a self-reporting type thing.
Are there any, Councilmember, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So, a couple of things. It's like I sign and agree that I'll follow the law that I have to follow to even be in the spot, but the problem is, is when you sign it, let's say today's date, I'm, I am in compliance, signed today, and then next year, or no, let's not say next year, a couple months later, you fall out of compliance and whether you know it or not, you signed from two weeks previously, two months previously. So, when you signed it, you thought you were in compliance and you were telling the truth because I thought I was. You fell out, but then your signature is not, once you fall out, it's already from, I'm in compliance when I signed it. So, how does that, you know, even matter if you signed something previously and then, I mean, is it like saying that I will always check and always update?
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to answer that?
The charter talks current, that is, you're not in default to the city. That's, that's, doesn't say specifically when you applied for the position or were voted in. It says, no person holding city office shall be in default to the city. So, it's a current thing, whether you signed something in the past or not, it's right now, are you in default? And then it has, there has to be a whole forfeiture proceeding with a public hearing to determine if or not the office should be forfeited.
And that would happen with or without a signature? I mean, it could happen by operation with or without our affidavit.
Yes.
And what if somebody falls out of compliance and is not aware at the time they fall out?
Well, that's for, you know, first you have to have a forfeiture proceeding, and then those are just like any other litigation, you know? If I can use that, that's a defense.
And I guess last thing. So, this affidavit would really have no consequence to the proceedings or anything official. It's just kind of like a feel-good, trust us, I signed it. I mean, is that, is that pretty much it? It's not like legally enforcing?
If you file the affidavit and it's truthful, yes, it's a feel-good, but it also is significant if the affidavit is untrue, for example, but it's an assurance. This is a council rule, and the council is just trying to administer the charter provision. So, it's an, it's like a bylaw provision. In fact, that's what those rules are.
Okay. Last thing for real. Let the charter reign supreme.
Right.
And again, affidavit is?
Right. It says, I mean, it doesn't say at the time of election, it says, no person holding city office shall be in default to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yeah. And so, I think the other piece, Councilman Jackson, is that if you look at the, the plain language of the resolution, this does, and I'm not saying that this doesn't happen, but this does technically initiate an annual review to make sure that we are continuously on an annual basis checking to make sure that we still meet the qualifications of the charter to actually hold these positions.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
Okay. Under the rules, that motion will lie over to the next council meeting, and we are to reports from council committees. Item?
Correct.
Reports from council committees, 22, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
So, Resolution 22, 202210 created the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety. And so, we had a committee on housing right before COVID, and because of COVID, and we couldn't have, you know, folks come in and be a part of it, the committee just kind of went by the wayside. And so, we felt it was important enough to, you know, reconstitute the Committee on Housing and Resident Safety, and we did. And the resolution directed the committee to provide a report to this council and to the public by September 1st, 2022. Ad-Hoc committees are temporary, and so it will be dissolved on December 31st, 2022. And the members were myself as chair, Vice President Wood as vice chair, and Councilmember Brown. And our first meeting was held on February 4th, 2022. And, you know, our goal was to meet with as many stakeholders as possible, and we did have members of the public, Greater Lansing Realities Association, 517 Can't Wait, we had code enforcement, the Land Bank Nation Outside, we had testimony from the Housing Ombudsman, from the Honorable Kristen Simmons, and from City of Lansing Department's Economic Development, Planning, Human Resources, and Community Services. And, you know, I, I always would have liked to have had more participation because I thought the, this was important enough, but I was pleased with the people who did actually come out and want to provide comment and recommendations. And so, this document represents the, the input that we received from the parties as well as input from the City, Lansing City Attorney's Office. So, what, what you see on here is it's separated into policy recommendations and, and budget priorities. And we say policy recommendations because a lot of it kind of directs the administration or asks administration to implement certain things, but City of Lansing cannot direct city employees, and so these are recommendations that we're making to the administration. You know, some of the ones that I, that, as you read through here, we made recommendations to the Department of Economic Development and Planning. Part of our testimony came right around the time where we were seeing stuff in the news about potential rental inspections not being conducted in a timely manner, and we, you know, wanted to make sure that we're staying current with those because as you can see, some of that has very tragic consequences. And so, requiring that, you know, the rental properties have both a rental license and a complete inspection before occupancy, conducting a study of the existing rental fees to ensure they're sufficient and consistent to meet the rigorous needs for safety housing with communities of similar sizes, create a landlord registry either through the BSNA portal or another platform that's publicly accessible, that shows housing inspections and the status, whether or not those homes are in compliance, have red tags or, or whatever. We also made some recommendations to HRCS, and this was through, 517 Can't Wait provided these through us, and I was really appreciative of that, but, you know, through the Housing Ombudsman, preparing additional education materials for renters so that they know the rights that are, as renter, know before you sign, providing eviction court information. You know, we, we suggest that they create, conduct at least two housing fairs in the city with MSU law each year so that folks can come in and ask their questions and, and have a face-to-face get recommendations. One of the things we asked was to create a brochure where tenants can go for assistance if they're forced to relocate due to red tags or violations by landlords. One of the things that we're seeing particularly with the Autumn Ridge situation, when there were pink tags or red tags put on the homes, is that the renters didn't know what that meant or what their options were. And so, putting together brochures or documents that can be, you know, if you're red tagging it, you can put this on their door so that that person in that home understands what's happening and what their rights are. Let's see. You know, implement a pilot program to incentivize landlords to accept Section 8 vouchers. We know that folks, you know, who get Section 8 vouchers can't find landlords to rent them for whatever reason. And so, looking at whether or not it's feasible to create some sort of incentive program for landlords to accept Section 8 vouchers. Prepare a report of red tag statistics annually to council during budget discussions to determine whether or not fees are sufficient. Prioritize rental inspections to be completed in a timely manner. And as code compliance comes to land, you know, to the city council during budget and talk about it, maybe that means they need additional resources. And so, council then can be in a position to look at that and look at the budget of whether or not they want to, you know, add resources to code enforcement. For city council, you know, continuing to address the concerns on tenant applications, you know, and to assist folks who are looking to rent homes for various issues, including considering criminal backgrounds or, or incarcerations. Continue to work with the legislature to adopt legislation that either authorizes tenant relocation payments statewide or authorizes local governments, the authority to establish a procedure for tenant relocation payments. And that, that's important as well as if your apartment gets red tagged through no fault of your own and you're kicked out of your apartment, where are you supposed to go? And so, I think it's incumbent upon the landlord to, to address that or bear the cost of that burden. One of the things we had Judge Simmons come in and talk about, a specialty court, a community court. And so, you know, work with, the city council work with Judge Simmons to create that or amend the Chapter 203 Municipal Civil Infractions and Section 297.15 Civil Infractions, immerse that with the specialty court. Support the creation of a community court. Update annually, get an update annually on the statistics of enforcement and penalties for unsafe conditions in homes. And look at implementation of a policy where nuisance actions are filed against recalcitrant landlords, enabling the city attorney to enter into voluntary compliance agreements. I mean, they can do that right now, but the sooner that we can get those, you know, those agreements with the city attorney and those recalcitrant landlords and perhaps put them through this community court where they have specific benchmarks for compliance that, you know, that makes the house safer that much sooner. You know, let's see. During the first meeting of the ad hoc, I asked the city attorney to investigate an ordinance that would require a landlord to pay for tenant's housing if, I'm sorry, I have typos in here, I apologize, if and when the resident was red tagged by the administration. And so, they did. They reviewed a number of ordinances. They reviewed ordinances in Jackson, Ann Arbor, Grand Rapids. Lisa did a, she did a great job of doing that and, and providing that information, and she did provide us a recommendation. And in that recommendations, there were three recommendations in the memo that she provided based on her, her research. One of them was to draft a resolution to state legislature requesting a state statute either authorizing tenant relocation payments or authorizing local governments, and I've already said that. We did draft that resolution, and it was adopted by city council. The other thing was to amend the International Property Maintenance Code to specifically tiered red tagging to the general civil infraction penalties contained in the code of ordinance and to specifically create a sliding scale of penalties. And so, that's probably something we need to continue to work at. And then the third recommendation for properties that incur multiple red tags per calendar year, change the penalty to a misdemeanor offense. For multifamily locations, we'd need to have clarification of whether that misdemeanor relate to a per-unit penalty or for the property as a whole. And so, you know, clearly, there's a lot more work to be done. Some of those recommendations will need additional work. So, we do anticipate continuing to meet until the end of the legislative season here, but we did have to provide a report by September 1st back to council. I want to, I want to thank the committee members. I, I think we did a great job, and I think that we listened to the public, to the people who came and the people who provided recommendations. I think we listened and we incorporated a number of their recommendations into this document, and so I'm very proud of this document. And so, with that, I would respectfully submit it to the city council as per the requirements of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. I too want to say thank you to Councilman Spitzley, Vice President Wood, and Councilman Brown. There were a lot of meetings, I know, and these were Fridays and a lot of times at the end of long weeks. And bottom line, we're talking about our housing stock. There were some passionate conversations, I know, I heard. And whenever you have these conversations and you're trying to be inclusive to all in our community, I know there are a lot of different interests at the table, so that, that makes the conversation even more difficult. So, we appreciate your work. I think there's a lot of really good things that we can, we can move on with regards to this particular report and the suggestions within. I did want to just offer a quick opportunity to Councilman Brown or Vice President Wood if either of you wanted to discuss the process or anything that was included. You guys worked long and hard on this, so you certainly have the floor if you would like. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein, and I, I do want to thank Patricia for her leadership in this and keeping us focused on the issues at hand and the fact that she realized that there were some of these things that we needed to continue to work on and that she, you know, said, just because the reports being turned in doesn't mean that we're not going to work till the end of the year. So, we look forward to seeing if we're able to move the needle on this some more between now and the end of the year. So, thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Brown, for your, for your work on it as well.
All right. Okay. And I, I think the other piece is although you're going to continue to have your conversations, you know, through the end of the year, you know, I look at this as something that can immediately, when you look at the things that are on here in terms of what council potentially do, I think this immediately, immediately lands on the leadership agenda for each week, and we can try to figure out how to operationalize some of this stuff. Obviously, this was included in our budget priorities, so, you know, there's obviously a suggestion at this point to the administration to add those things that are noted by, what we have crosses here, I believe. And then the other piece is we meet quite regularly with, with the administration. So, we actually as leadership meet once a month, and then the other piece is we actually meet as a council on a quarterly basis as part of the brown bag meeting. And I think, you know, this becomes an agenda item for each one of those meetings as well. Okay. We certainly. We certainly don't want this to collect dust. So with that being said, certainly appreciate your work. Thank you.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That is the yellow sheet in the back. And you'll have up to three minutes, but council rules do require you to sign in ahead of time. Jason is collecting those for the next minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Don't leave just yet because we need five. Thank you so much. All right, yeah, we're threatening at this point, quorum. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. So can you make the referrals without, without a quorum?
Yep. Yep, we've approved as a quorum, then I can make the referrals, we're good.
Okay, we have from the clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And two items relative to an ordinance repealing licensing requirements for massage therapists.
City operations.
Two items relative to repealing licensing for wreckers.
City operations.
And two items relative.
Hold on one second, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, we've lost the quorum.
I know.
I thought, hold on, so I thought, so I thought, so let's back up because there was a quorum that said that the council president could make referrals. I got you, so we do need Mr. Jackson back.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, they haven't left. They're using the restroom, they're, so is it okay to proceed or do we need to wait? Okay, so, so I was right. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. And two items relative to an ordinance repealing the requirements for solicitors of charitable and religious donations.
Ways and Means.
And items from the mayor, setting a public hearing and the action for a substantial amendment to the home ARP allocation plan.
Committee of the whole.
Outside legal counsel that was addressed earlier this evening.
Committee of the whole, place on file.
Appointment of Randy Watkins to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
EDI.
Appointment of Kendall O'Connor to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
EDI.
Grant Acceptance Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant.
Ways and Means.
And Grant Acceptance Justice Assistance Grant for the Lansing Crisis Team for the Lansing Police Department.
Ways and Means.
And item from President Hussein, a communication from Jack Alexander regarding LEFA and the mayor's office.
That is placed on file and we just got our fifth and sixth person back for quorum so we can move on the motion of excused absence.
Okay. And I would just note that the next item on the agenda is communications and petitions, which also might be called correspondence, but the rules call it communications and petitions. And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. At this time, I would move to excuse Councilmember Daniels from tonight's meeting.
All right, there is a mo, he was here. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And.
Vice President Wood.
As part of the communications and petitions, the two communications from the developers on the projects, on the pilots, if those could be entered into the record as having the recent.
Yeah, and just to be clear, because the applicant actually applied, sorry, for the pilots, the applicant actually needed to request in writing for those pilots to be pulled from the agenda tonight, and they effective.
Okay, and remarks by council members.
Do we have any remarks from council members? Seeing none.
Remarks by the executive assistant of the mayor.
Mr. Lawrence, Mrs. De Sessa.
No, thank you, Council President. We don't have any reports at this time, but just a, just a reminder, mayor didn't indicate to the city council that he was observing Rosh Hashanah, so again, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. And the first speaker is Daniel Arnold, followed by Mike Lynn.
Hello there, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook Guy Smiley. It's been a little while since I've seen all you guys, everybody here. I'm pretty excited to see all these city members here who are really passionate about this city. And I've seen many of you here for quite some time. Councilmember Jackson, Garza, Carol Wood, Chris Swope, Councilmember Hussein, new council member Jeffrey Brown, and council member Spitzley. I do miss seeing the mayor here today. There's just so much I'd like to share, but, you know, we got three minutes. Let's see. The police commissioner meeting is the third Tuesday of every month at 5:30. And the location of the meeting, it's every other, every other month is posted at a different location. So like, every other month is at headquarters. So on the door of headquarters, you can go see where the meeting's going to be at the 5:30 at the third Tuesday. And it's just like, I'm pretty much a lot of times the only one making public comment, and I'm really sad about that because it's just, a lot of people have feelings, especially here out here. I bet you have lots of feelings about the police, whether good, bad, or indifferent or whatever. And, you know, you need to go up there and the chief will come up and shake your hand, they'll listen to you, the, you know, police, the way they operate is action instead of words sometimes. So you can just say whatever and over time, they're paying attention, the commissioners are caring, and we need people in the city to go forth and, you know, contact internal affairs more and, you know, talk to the commissioner. So I'm really, really encouraging people to come out to that. Let's see what else. The City Rescue Mission just recently opened their outreach again. That's a drop-in center for like, it's an emergency, like mental health, drug addiction, whatever. People who are in chaos can come up to City Rescue Mission, drop in on 601 North Larch from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM and have a place to be safe and warm. And as we're getting colder, we're really thinking about that. And there's so many opportunities to volunteer, serve, work, whatever. I know Jody Washington has been involved with that. Yeah, that's, City Rescue Mission, you know, even people who have a record, they might need to do community service so they can volunteer at the thrift store. We're down to 30 seconds here on the clock. Heritage Hall is a new section of the Capitol that's recently opened, and it's just really a lot of museum-like parts to it that are really nice. You guys really need to go over to the Capitol. The Capitol, the whole Capitol's open Monday through Friday from 5, from 8:00 AM to 5:30. There's an African worship church that is called Living Word at Trinity Lutheran. Come out and hear some like, hear people singing African at 501 West Saginaw at 4:00 PM. End of story. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, followed by Jerry Norris.
So real quickly, I seen all of the lawsuits on the paperwork today, and it just made me think of this story that I heard prior to starting the village, but also during the same time when I brought my lawsuit forward. Once upon a time, there was a small village on the edge of a river. The people there were good and the life in the village was good. One day, a villager noticed a baby floating down the river. The villager quickly swam out to save the baby from drowning. The next day, this same villager noticed two babies in the river. He called for help and both babies were rescued from the swift waters. And the following day, four babies were seen caught in the turbulent current, and then eight, and then more, and then still more. The villagers organized themselves quickly, setting up watchtowers and training teams of swimmers who could resist the swift waters and rescue babies. Rescue squads were soon working 24 hours a day. And each day, the number of helpless babies floating down the river increased. The villagers organized themselves efficiently. The rescue squads were now snatching many children each day. Though not all the babies, now very numerous, could be saved, the villagers felt they were doing well to save as many as they could each day. Indeed, the village priests blessed them in their good work, and life in the village continued on that basis. One day, the villagers noticed a young man running northbound or northward along the bank. They shouted, "Where are you going? We need you to help with the rescue." He responded, "I'm going upstream to find the son of a gun who's throwing these kids out into the river." And this is just what I keep thinking about when I see 15 lawsuits continuously and over and over, and us adding more lawyers to help with this process. Council, seeing all this and going into closed sessions to hear about, you know, what type of litigation is going on, what's our, what's our financial, you know, what's our financial, you know, burden if we, if we lose and so on and so forth? But I feel like there's just so many babies in the river. When are we going to go upstream? I feel like I went upstream. When I filed in 2019, there wasn't many people speaking on any of these issues. I mean, committees were formed over and over again to found the issues, they came to you all with them. The Mid-Act came with a resolution about the issues that were coming, that were going on down in the mayor's office, executive branch. You all said you didn't have any, any type of investigative powers over that. We now found out in the charter, you do have investigative powers over these departments. I guess I just, I'm just asking after I seen all of that, and I think that my wife is going to actually come up here and speak to what, kind of what specifics are going on with those. I know what they are, but there's a problem. There's babies going up river constantly. So even if you guys win next week and you celebrate that win, that you didn't lose any money, I didn't come into this for money. I don't think any of us do. I think that we took the process for what it was and hoped that people were going to actually do something and stop this thing from happening, and it just never happened. We got to a point where we had no choice but to file. So regardless of how the wins or losses come out in these processes, I just hope it's not in vain. What the people go through to come forward and fight a city government, I mean, multitudes of lawyers, I mean, there's like eight lawyers sitting there fighting me. Just don't let it be in vain. You guys got to do something. Step in. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Jerry Norris, who I believe might have left. Okay, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Nicholas Zandi. Nicholas Zandi, followed by Michael Mercer.
Thank you, members of the city council and Mr. City Clerk. I'm sure you've heard me speak about decentralizing lanes, seeing time and time again. But I'm still going to talk about it because it somehow is still in limbo, because apparently you can't find any ballot language at all yet. I mean, it's not like it's that complicated. It's a very simple issue and a simple proposal. Just increase the number of wards from four to eight and phase out the at-large positions as their current terms expire. If the council is genuinely willing to at least discuss it, then they should have time set for it, for such a discussion at committee of the whole means or whatever committee is willing to discuss it, and they should bring it to the whole council as well. I, but I also want to add something on to it, and I hope everyone is listening to me. That is, we need to have all city elections, city council, city clerk, mayor in one single election year. I know that many people may be hesitant to support it, but guess what? Every two years, we elect a new state house, and every four years, we elect a new state senate and a new governor. All of their seats are, in each of the legislatures are up in specific years with zero exceptions whatsoever. Same thing goes with the US House Representative. The only body on the federal level that doesn't follow that rule is the US Senate. And it is not exactly the most well-liked branch of government considering its problems. And because of that, we need the city council to be definitely a little more like the US House Representatives and a lot less like the US Senate. Because the city council needs to be representative of the people and not of the elites in the Chamber of Commerce and other billionaires. And I hope you discuss it in further means, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Mercer and then Larry Hutchinson.
This what I happened to have heard a couple of weeks ago here at the council about Bankrot Park is going to possibly be changing into a driving range for those people who go to the Grossback Golf Course. I don't want to see that park, you know, disappearing. We've already lost a park over, if you remember here about four or five years ago, was it Ormond Park? You had a road put in to the darn driveway parking lot over there, and now they want to take another park away from Lansing. That ain't going to happen. If they want a driving range, they, I expect them maybe to go back to where they used to be back in the past over there on Mount Hope, there on the north side of the road next to the, the Mount Hope Cemetery between Pennsylvania and Aurelius. And not take another park away from the city of Lansing. I used to go to that park years ago when we lived over in that subdivision before we moved the whole. But anyhow, I would like for that park to be left alone and not be given to that golf course, to the, what is it, LEFA, whatever they are. They've already taken a park. They don't need another park that people of Lansing are paying taxes for, Parks Village. Or else if they're going to be disappearing, I'd probably like to see people do what John said down here, vote no on everything.
Thank you. Next is Larry Hutchinson, followed by Erica Lynn.
I seek refuge from, with Allah, from Satan. Honorable counsel.
Mayor's office, city clerk's office, city attorney's office, public safety, local media, residents of the great and beautiful city of Lansing, Michigan, citizens of the United States and the world. Mr. President, I rise and extend myself as much time as I may consume to extend and revise my remarks. I'm Larry Hutchinson, Green Party nominee for Michigan Secretary of State. Free Brittany, free Larry. Well, in the library, reading about breakups and loss and grieving and healing and letting go and getting over it, none of that stuff worked. So I went on to a different subject. I found the autobiography of Malcolm X. And I found out, not from the biography of Malcolm X, but from just research that Mr. Malcolm X and Sister Betty X were married here in Lansing, Michigan. So that's a little fact for everybody to put their, put in their hat. Now, I believe that black people in America deserve reparations. I understand some people on the other side, or whichever side you, that wants to ban critical race theory, which is the, I believe, the study of slavery. And with all the rapes and the, the whippings and killings and, I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want to relive that either. According to Malcolm X, the sharks got fat following the shape, the slave ships, because they would throw, you know, if a slave got, not a slave, a black person, a human being, got sick or something like that, they'd just throw them over the ship and the shape, the sharks learned to follow the route so that they could get some of those black bodies. So I do believe that is appropriate. Native Americans get money. People from the Holocaust and that situation got money. I do believe that black people should get a check for the suffering that they, that we suffered and continue to suffer in America. The home of the free, the land of the brave. Thank you, counsel, and I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn and then John Moran.
Okay, so I want to start off because I was actually really glad that Mike came up here and told the story about the babies falling in the river. It's something that I've heard before, I've read before, we've actually talked about, I've referred to, and I think it's a really good analogy because as I think about our city and the state of the city right now and how many babies are hurting and how many people are hurting our city, it can get very defeating and very frustrating. It's even more frustrating because when you watch a lot of the propaganda that is put out by Mayor Propagandy, and that is a nickname that was given, and I think rightfully so, it is propaganda. So no matter how. no matter how many selfies and how many pictures that you see, you know, online and on Facebook of how great everything is, it does not take away how many people in this city are hurting and have been harmed specifically by this administration. And as I was thinking about that, you all went into closed session earlier in committee of the whole, and it's something you do quarterly to talk about litigation. And as I was looking through all of the litigation, I realized, wow, there are 15 lawsuits against the city of Lansing. I don't know if that's a lot, or if it's not. I don't know if that's concerning. It's concerning to me. There are 15 lawsuits. 11 of those are by people. That means there is a person's name versus city of Lansing. So, a person did what they had to do to sue a city. And I want to assure you that that is no easy feat. It is not something that people take on lightly because the city has all of the time and the money and the resources, whereas people don't. So, we use that analogy about the babies going down the river. A lot of times, you all are up on that platform, surrounded by the people throwing them in the river. And we are the ones that are swimming literally upstream trying to figure it out. So, when we talk about the litigation and those 11, I got to thinking about, what are those for? So, I just want to really quickly go down the list of the 11 people that are suing the city of Lansing and why. Four of those are for racial discrimination. Four of those are for civil rights violations. Two of those are for wrongful death and civil rights violation, both of which happened in the Lansing City Jail. One of those is for defamation and malicious prosecution. That's a lot to take in. Four civil rights lawsuits and four racial discrimination lawsuits. But a lot of folks around here would have us think that everything is fine. That all of these people risked everything, their reputations, their livelihoods, their time, their money, their resources, their sanity, their health. To go up against what we know, again, has the money, time, influence, and resources. So, when you're having those conversations, remember that they're people. And remember that a lot of us that are swimming upstream, it doesn't matter how these turn out, we're going to still continue to swim upstream.
Thank you. Next, we have John Moran and then Josh Owies.
Hello. So, previously, I talked about how three individuals tried to beat me to death. And then I had a bullet landed at my feet in my home. Today, I'm going to discuss something else. In my neighborhood, they didn't solve the two murders on the block, or in the break-ins, or the robberies, the drugs, the prostitution. They solved nothing. So, they were on the job though. They, my girlfriend met this couple that was associated with a church. They were in the neighborhood to help out homeless people and prostitutes, stuff like that. She wanted me to know if I'd let her help them because I have concerns. My girlfriend has social security for issues. Anyways, I let her do it. And it turned out later on, they got arrested for drugs and guns. The drug dealer, church guy, realized that he had an out. He could take advantage of Sherry and get her involved in drugs and get her to say stuff and work with the Lansing City Police Department. So, I got the Lansing City cops, along with a predatory drug dealer, at my house, feeding her drugs, crack cocaine. All that so they could raid my house. All that so they could charge her and I with about a dozen felonies. One of the felonies was a murder-for-hire. In that case, I was supposedly the victim and also a defendant. Anyways, Sherry told me two weeks before we got raided that she had concerns about Samuel Funches, the preacher guy, that he was involved in drugs and guns, had been arrested, and got her addicted. I wasn't able to do anything. I was working 12 hours a day. So, while I was working, the cops were at my house feeding her drugs every day. I've got videos where she was totally out of her mind. She come to me saying that she had total loss of memory of entire days because of the drugs. They raided my house. They destroyed everything. They didn't take. I got some pictures. They took eight months. When we showed Dunning's the evidence, they dropped the charges immediately. We knew about Dunning's picking up prostitutes in the neighborhood at that time too, but who do you call? There's nobody to call. Anyways, maybe sometime I'll get a chance to talk to the mayor about all this stuff, instead of having to come here every week or every two weeks. But I'm going to keep coming because I can't wait to talk about the Zanys, Edward Zany and Simon Zany. I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. Next, and finally, is Josh Owies.
John Moran. How many times did I Facebook you? Quite a few times.
Josh, Joshua.
All right, Josh, if we could have you come up, and if we could have other folks in the gallery, respect Josh's time at the podium. Thank you so much.
You adored me.
All right. Hello, everybody. Lansing is an immigrant city, and we often rely on our immigrant communities to build up our economy. And thus, we have now a moment to commemorate and honor somebody who really sacrificed a lot. Not, this won't affect us directly, but it does affect many people and the immigrant community at large here in Lansing and Michigan and the US as a whole. Tragically, there was a death over in Iran, which sparked revolutionary movements and fight for freedom. And that is something that Lansing stands for. That is something that the United States says they stand for. And so, now, we are here to ask for you to consider creating a tribute to Massa Amini, who put, who lost her life in a struggle. She was simply going down the street, wearing the hijab the wrong way. And she was arrested, abused, and then found dead. It is a tragic story that deserves our attention and our respect for the people in Iran who are struggling with this medieval oppression every single day. What we can do is set up a remembrance for her and her story and her struggle, and the struggle and story of so many other immigrants that come to this country and find refuge. But so many do not. And so, I'm asking you to take some time and to find, to find a purpose, an idea, establish something with the, with the community that exists here in Lansing, a way for Lansing to be one of the first cities in the United States to commemorate this individual that sparked an entire nation to stand up and fight back against oppression and stand up for her freedom and the freedom of others. So, if you could kindly come up with a structure, like I said, together with the community that exists here, to remember the life and the struggle of Massa Amini and the women's struggle against the medieval oppression, medieval oppressing regimes across the world, but specifically Iran. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
All right. With that, and no other business before the body, we are adjourned at 8:39.